Council in session just yet. We have a very... An extremely impressive group of young leaders. And I also want to thank Jeff Curtis, Brett Baker, and Leslie Goodlow for helping to coordinate their visit this morning. Just briefly on the Rose Festival, it's been part of Portland's popular culture for over a century. It was identified and acknowledged in 2010 as being the official festival of the city. It was a very brilliant move on the part of former community leaders back in the early part of the 1900s to create the Rose Festival, to help put Portland on the global map, and to brand it the summer capital of the world. They have dozens of events, as everybody is aware throughout the festival, supporting a diverse set of interests and cultural aspects of our community. The Rose Festival makes a positive impact on hundreds of thousands of lives annually, and it brings smiles to the faces of both locals and guests from all around the nation and all around the world. The bottom line is that the Rose Festival makes Portland a better place to live and to visit, and the court is certainly the highlight of the entire event. So with that, Brett, I'll let you do your introduction, and we'll let the ladies introduce themselves.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm Brett Baker. I'm the president of the nonprofit Portland Rose Festival Foundation. And while the ladies assemble behind me, I want to take the opportunity to thank the city of Portland. The reason the Rose Festival is here is for the citizens of the city and the state. And without the support of the city, there's no way a festival of this size could take place. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We appreciate it very much. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the Rose Festival Court, who I believe are gonna introduce themselves. And also, I want to recognize Leslie Goodlow Baldwin, an esteemed employee of the city and chair of the court and past president of the Portland Rose Festival in the centennial year 2007.
Hello. We are the 2017 Rose Festival Court, presented by United Community Credit Union. We'd like to introduce ourselves and tell you what's happening during this year's Rose Festival. Anna.
My name is Anna, and I go to Lincoln High School. I was on the Constitution team, and I represented my school at the statewide Poetry Out Loud competition. In my free time, I can be found working on my fiction novels or studying the stars. Come and join the Rose Festival for a brilliant solar event that will occur on August 21st. Down at Waterfront Park, come and watch the skies were dark. Professor E. Eclipse will be on site to protect your eyes from day to night.
Armina.
My name is Armina. I'm from Jefferson High School. I participate in On Track OSHU in hopes to become a pediatrician. I enjoy spending time outdoors, breathing in fresh air, and exploring new paths on my running adventures. For my fellow runners, come join the Rose Festival Half Marathon on Sunday, May 28th. Can't run the full 13.1 miles, sign up for the world's shortest half marathon, the .1 run. This popular race is 528 feet. It starts and finishes inside City Fair. On Saturday, May 27th, come join the fun at one of our runs.
Maggie.
I'm Maggie from Wilson High School. Someday, I hope to become a writer for film and television. As for now, I am a young professional at the Oregon Children's Theater. I'm a lover of fashion and photography, and the best place to take a snapshot is at my favorite event, Rose Festival City Fair. Bring your family and friends to City Fair on the waterfront for three weekends of fun. Make crafts in the kids' zone, see animals that walk on the wild side, and hop on your favorite carnival rides. It all starts on May 26th with opening night fireworks.
Cora.
I'm Cora from Roosevelt High School. I'm a performer in several ways. I dance, cheer, sing, and play various instruments. One of my greatest highlights as a performer has been cheering with my team down the Grand Floral Parade route. Come see the brilliant performers at the spectacular Spirit Mountain Casino Grand Floral Parade on Saturday, June 10th. Watch for the amazing horses, dancing groups, marching bands, and all floral floats, including the mini float representing communities from around the region. You can see it from the streets and reserve seating at the Veterans Memorial Coliseum or live on KPTV Fox Channel 12.
Tiffany.
I'm Tiffany, and I'm from David Douglas High School, where you can find me serving on student council, mentoring freshmen, or cheering on our sports teams. One of my favorite memories is when I danced among the lights at my favorite Rose Festival event, the Starlight Parade. Bring your family to downtown Portland for the PG-Solve Starlight Parade on Saturday, June 3rd at 8:30 p.m. Come see the brilliant displays of illuminated floats, marching bands, dancing groups, and special entries that light up the sky at this nighttime event. Or watch them live on KPTV Fox Channel 12.
Myranny.
I'm Myranny from Park Rose High School. I'm a student athlete who also loves the arts and who dreams of being a veterinarian. During my free time, I enjoy volunteering at retirement homes, reading, hanging out with my pets, and spending time with my family. Bring your family to see the ships line up on the waterfront, Park Seawall, during Fleet Week, June 7th through June 11th. The Rose Festival is excited to welcome ships back to Portland from the United States Navy, U.S. Coast Guard, and the Royal Canadian Navy. While they are here, you can climb aboard for a free ship tour for a complete Fleet Week experience.
Mela.
I'm Mela from Madison High School, where I'm the co-student body president. I love to travel, which inspired my desire to become a professional airline pilot. When I'm not singing, playing sports, or dreaming of flying, my favorite thing to do in Portland is to walk across the bridges. If you love the sight of water as much as I do, come see the dragon boat races held on the Willamette River near the Hawthorne Bridge on June 10th and June 11th. The dragon boat races aren't the only ones on the river this year. On Sunday, June 25th, come cheer on kids and their families in the classic Rose Festival event, the Milk Carton Boat Races.
Keely.
I'm Keely from Franklin High School. Whether I'm not playing varsity tennis or trying new vegan recipes, you can find me attending school, government fundraisers, and meetings. I take pride in doing what I can do to lead by example in my high school community. Show pride in your community by keeping the streets of Portland clean and green. The Portland Rose Festival has been named the cleanest and greenest, working hard to keep the post-parade streets spotless for over 20 years.
Chade.
I'm Chade from Grant High School. When I think of this year's Rose Festival theme brilliant, I think of Maya Angelou's poem, Phenomenal Woman. As a aspiring poet, senior mentor, and a youth basketball coach, I strive to inspire others to believe in their inner brilliance. Join me and these phenomenal women to see who will be crowned this year Queen of Rosaria. The Queens for Nation, presented by United Community Credit Union, will take place on June 10th, 8:30 a.m. in the Veterans Memorial Coliseum. Watch the crowning take place right before the Grand Floral Parade, and we appreciate your support.
Mahi.
I'm Mahi from Central Catholic High School. I'm the co-president of the Multicultural Club, a member of the African-American Students Union and the Girls Alliance Club. My favorite place in Portland is the Hoyt Arboretum. I enjoy learning about new plant species and following the paths to beautiful views of Portland. The Portland Rose Festival is proud to announce the Bloom Project as this year's official charity. The Bloom Project creates bouquets spring beauty and joy to hospice patients around the community. Keep your eye out for more information on the parade of bouquets, where volunteers will work to repurpose Grand Floral Parade foot flowers into special bouquets to be shared with those in need of comfort and support.
Beev Two.
I'm Beev Two from Cleveland High School. As a mentor, a student body leader, and an older sister, I am proud to be a role model for others. I hope to take the same approach with me as I begin my studies in pre-law and business. My favorite Rose Festival event is the Junior Parade, where celebrities are brilliant youth. Show your support for local youth by joining us for the Fred Meyer Junior Parade, Wednesday, June 7th in the Hollywood District. Watch floats, comedic groups, baton twirls, marching dance, and dance teams go by. Can't see it in person, watch the broadcast live on KPTV Fox Channel 12.
Lucy.
I'm Lucy from St. Mary's Academy. I value creativity in my life. I dedicate my time to photography, videography, and speech writing. My junior year, I was given the opportunity to present a TED Talk entitled "The Power of Music", which focused on the physical, emotional, and philosophical effects of music on the world. If you're a music lover like me, make your way to downtown for a series of concerts happening this season in the Rose Zone. We've partnered with your favorite radio stations to bring you a variety of concerts. Check out The Kink, H2O Show, The Brew, Presenting Seether, and The Bulls Country Fest featuring Joe Nichols. Come down and join in the musical fun.
Michaela.
I'm Michaela from Century High School, representing the Metro West area. I enjoy the great outdoors and spending time with family and friends. I work with organizations such as Key Club International and Hillsborough's Youth Advisory Council. As a member of the Hillsborough community, I aspire to exemplify our community slogan, Grow Great Things. You know who else grows great things? The International Rose Test Garden located at Washington Park. The Rose Garden will be celebrating their centennial year with the Hundred Years of Roses. Visit the Rose Garden store to get your memorabilia for this brilliant event.
Maddie.
I'm Maddie from Oregon City High School, representing the Metro East area. Empowering women is an important part of my life. Through my work as a Girl Scout ambassador and founder of my own anti-bullying organization, Continue to Find Kindness, our mission is to educate youth on how to recognize and resolve bullying through the power of kindness. This year, Cambia is empowering women in keeping Portland brilliant by bringing out the best woman golf pros in the world. The Cambia Portland Classic will be held at Columbia Edgewater Golf Course on Labor Day weekend. Your Rose Festival souvenir pin will get you in free to City Fair and the Cambia Portland Classic. Come show your support for these brilliant women.
Crochet.
And I'm Crochet from Benton High School, where I'm an honor student athlete working to one day become a nurse practitioner. I enjoy playing volleyball and volunteering with the Red Cross Organization to inspire others to live their life to the fullest by leading healthy lifestyles. Now hike or dance your way down the Grand Floral Parade Route at the pre-parade Bank of the West Grand Floral Walk. Wear a funky costume or a branded t-shirt as you walk the walk past hundreds of thousands of spectators cheering you on. There's no better way to get your 10,000 steps in.
Thank you for hosting the 2017 Rose Festival Court, presented by United Community Credit Union. We'll see you at the Rose Festival.
And then on behalf of the 2017 Rose Festival Court, I would like to personally just thank all of you, everyone on council, for hosting us and present all of you with a signed poster from each of the princesses and to welcome you to the Rose Festival family.
Very good. So Susan, let's open these gates, and let's have the ladies come over here. We'll get a picture with the city council before you leave. Does that sound good? We've marched a long way around here. Thanks. Yeah, thanks. We okay here?
Keely, make sure I can see you. All right, on three. One, two, three. So everybody's gonna be snapping. All right, one, two, three.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good. Please do. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot. Thank you. Oh, thank you. I was trying to say, I appreciate it. All right, let's see. That was fun. All right, good morning, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Portland City Council, Wednesday, May 24th, 2017. Susan, please call the roll.
Fish. Saltman.
Here.
Udelli.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. Purpose of council meetings is to do the city's business, including hearing from the community on issues of concern. In order for us to hear from everyone and to give due consideration to matters before the council, we must all endeavor to preserve the order and decorum of these meetings. To make sure that the process is clear for everyone, I want to review some of the basic guidelines, which I hope will help everybody to feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe at the meeting, and also to ensure the decorum is maintained. There are two opportunities for public participation. First, we have an opportunity for people to sign up for communications to briefly speak about any subject that they would like to speak about. These items must be scheduled in advance with the city clerk's office. Second, people may sign up for public testimony on the first readings of reports, resolutions, and ordinances. If you sign up, your testimony must be about the matter being considered at the time. Please state your name for the record. We don't need your address. If you're a lobbyist, please state that. If you're here representing an organization, that's useful information as well. Individuals have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will go on. You'll hear a beep. When your time is up, the red light goes on. You'll hear, I think it's like four or five beeps. Conduct that disrupts the meeting, for example shouting or interrupting other people's testimony or council deliberations, will not be allowed. Personal attacks and insults levied against city and council staff, many of whom are required to testimony as a condition of their employment, will not be tolerated. People who disrupt the meeting face ejection from the meeting. If there is a disruption, I'll issue a warning that if any further disruption occurs, anyone who is disrupting the meeting will be subject to ejection for the remainder of the meeting. Anybody who's asked to leave and doesn't is subject to arrest for trespassing. So again, on that happy note, let's start with...
The kids are all like shaking their heads going, "Yeah, of course. That's so obvious, right? It's obvious." Common sense, common decency, common courtesy. Please call the first item.
We have communications today, item 522 through 526. And this is, these are students from French American International School addressing council regarding community concerns from the youth perspective.
And colleagues, they have asked for an additional two minutes. They have rehearsed their testimony, and it's two minutes over, and I believe we can extend that courtesy.
I just want to remind you to speak into the microphones, because that way the captioners can make sure that everybody can understand it, both in the chambers and watching at home.
Slide those mics as close to, you know, not right up to your face, but, you know, within six inches is about the right distance. There you go. Good job. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lily Segna. I'm in sixth grade at Gilkey International Middle School. I'm here today to talk about a program I'd like to propose. This program would incorporate the Oregon Silver Spot Butterfly into the Portland Public School curriculum to raise awareness that this butterfly, native to the west coast, is listed as threatened on the endangered species list. The primary reason that the Oregon Silver Spot is threatened is due to habitat loss. The Silver Spot solely depends on blue violets to lay its eggs on and for its caterpillars to eat. Habitat loss is primarily due to the increasing number of invasive plants taking over the land the blue violets need to survive. The Oregon Silver Spot Butterfly is important to the ecosystem, which is why we should protect it. This butterfly is important because it is a pollinator and an indicator species. What it means to be a pollinator is that the Silver Spot fertilizes plants, which causes the plants to produce food, which we then eat. As an indicator species, if Silver Spots disappear from an ecosystem, it means that there's a problem in that ecosystem that could affect other pollinators. This butterfly is so important that the Oregon Zoo has a program to help restore its habitat and population. I am asking you, Portland City Council members, to fund the Portland Public Schools to create a program that would incorporate the Oregon Silver Spot into the elementary school curriculum. My vision of this program could include a partnership with the zoo. In this program, students could play a game developed by the zoo to learn about the life cycle of the Oregon Silver Spot. They could also take a field trip to the zoo for a behind-the-scenes tour of the Silver Spot Restoration Project. I think this program should be aimed for elementary school kids, because if you pass a message to a kid, they will pass the message to everybody around them so that everybody hears the message. My ultimate goal is to raise awareness about endangered species by educating kids about the Oregon Silver Spot, which is listed as threatened on the federal endangered species list. The Oregon Silver Spot Butterfly isn't just a pretty insect fluttering from flower to flower. It is also a large part of the world around us. If the population drops lower, we are taking away an important part of the ecosystem, an important part of our earth. When kids today see Oregon Silver Spot butterflies, it becomes a special memory. If the Silver Spot becomes extinct, we may be taking away the special memory for generations to come. Remember, your actions will impact the earth for generation after generation, year after year. I hope you consider my proposal. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Smithy.
I'm Alisa.
My name is Adriana. We are students at Gilkey International Middle School. We are here to tell you about the Portland homeless crisis.
It is very noticeable, and it's getting worse and worse, and we have to do something about it.
We are here to tell you some solutions we have come up with to give more homeless people homes and give them education to get them back on their feet.
There are people that are homeless because of luck, but there are people that are homeless because of drugs, drinking, and losing things that they already have. So why don't we care about the homeless? There are people too, and they should deserve what we get. If we look down at them, it makes not only them unhappy, but us too. We will start overflowing with homeless on the street, so it's time to take action and make a difference.
Oregon is the second worst in the country at providing shelters for the homeless. There is 620,000 homeless in Oregon, but we only have about 15 homeless shelters and two family shelters. Only 60.5% of Oregon's homeless have a shelter to sleep in every night. A homeless shelter is a place where you can go when times are rough. But think about if you have a family. You don't want to separate from your family, and that's why we need more family shelters. It is scary to leave your family and live alone, and that's why we need more family shelters. A family shelter is where families can go when times are rough. But think about, a family shelter is where families can stay together and learn about managing money and other necessary life skills. We only have two family shelters in Oregon and only have six rooms, about six rooms in each. And we need way more than six rooms to help get families off the streets. Family shelters not only give a roof over their head, but educate people on living so they can get back on their feet. But regular shelters don't offer that, and that has to change, because everyone deserves to have a roof over their head and some education.
In conclusion, we have come up with a couple of solutions to help get homeless people off the streets. Our first solution is to simply get more family shelters in Oregon. This is expensive, but is very effective. Another more reasonable solution is to add more rooms to the current family shelters. We have had enough time waiting, and it's time to take action before it's too late. Help make Portland a better place.
Our sources are PortlandOregon.gov, CityJournal.org, and the Multnomah County Department of County Human Services. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent testimony. And were there more students, Susan, who...? Oh, very good. Good morning. I just want more cheer down there. There you go. And again, if you could just make sure the microphones, they go up and down and to the side. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Camille, and I believe that some dog parks should be fenced. I do not want all dog parks to be fenced, because some dogs like to run around free, but more than 10 out of 26. In your packet, there are some maps of places I would like to fence. Because I'm the owner of an exuberant chocolate lab, I like knowing I can let him loose and still have the peace of mind he won't run away or get hurt. Also, being allergic to dogs is very common and can be very dangerous. In fact, according to ABCNews.GO.com, 15% of people are allergic to dogs, and 30% of people with asthma are allergic to pets. If we fence dog parks, people in the park that are allergic won't have to worry constantly. Also, parents who don't know if their child is allergic won't have to worry that there has been a dog in the park. According to BringFido.com, there is at least 36 dog parks in Portland, and only 10 are fenced. Those parks are The Field Park, East Delta Park, Gabriel Park, Portland International Raceway Park, Brentwood Park, Normandale Park, North Clackamas Park, Cooch Park, and Chimney Park. That means dog owners may have to drive far to get to one of those parks. I want to make sure every dog can get to a fenced park. The government can fund fencing of my chosen five parks: Fernhill, Fraser, Lorhurst, Overlook, and Woodstock Parks. In your packet, you can see my ideas for where I would fence those parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Parsa.
And I'm Maiera.
Today, we're going to talk about graffiti, specifically in our beautiful city, Portland, Oregon. We'll be telling you why we are against all graffiti, including hateful graffiti and the type you see on the side of the highways, which may or may not be inappropriate.
So as you can see, our topic is graffiti, especially getting rid of hateful graffiti, and it is getting worse. According to KPTV.com, it is costing Oregon $300,000 to $400,000 per year. This is beyond what it should be costing, and we have to do something about it. We want to help you do something about it. I am passionate about this because our community has recently struggled keeping antisemitic and hate against anyone for race, gender, or religion under control and out of our Portland neighborhoods.
I am passionate about this particular issue because our planet is giving us a clean and healthy life, and we're spray painting hateful things, which is harmful to the environment because we're spreading the bad toxins in the air from the spray paint. I'm also passionate about this issue because it is offensive to many of our Portland residents and people all over the world that are put down by these unnecessary and disrespectful remarks that they see on the side of walls and buildings everywhere they go. This is not healthy for others or ourselves, seeing as people that spray paint these things are simply doing it out of boredom. I don't like the idea of making our planet dirty because the planet gave us an opportunity, and we are wasting it and misusing the rights we have.
I am also passionate about this particular issue because I was raised in a Jewish household with two mothers. I have noticed that some of these hateful messages that we are seeing around Portland are directed at Jewish people and the LGBT community. According to OregonLive.com, on Monday, March 13th, 2017, residents of southeast Portland, Oregon woke up to swastika graffiti in their neighborhood on cars, fences, trees, and various other items. Also, according to K2 News, on March 20th, 2017, the neighbors that were victims of the swastika graffiti were protesting against antisemitic graffiti sprayed painted on people's cars in southeast Portland. More than 100 people gathered at Waverly Heights Congregational Sunday School to have a rally against hateful graffiti and let people know that hate won't be tolerated in their neighborhood. Many people drew Jews' stars and other signs in chalk on the sidewalk and called it peace painting.
Even though we know some graffiti is made on purpose for decoration, most graffiti is made when people get bored. This means they'll probably get together and start illegally spray painting some walls. Some people enjoy the adrenaline rush of doing something illegal or running away from cops on purpose. We believe that not all graffiti is bad. If graffiti is done on property that they don't have a permit to be on, or if it is hateful, such as some of the graffiti we have seen recently, but graffiti can be good if the people do it for decoration and they're simply doing it out of enjoyment of doing art. Another recent graffiti can be good is if they're doing it in a place where they have a permit to be on or their own property. And finally, they can really stress by spray painting.
We need your help with educating people that we are all the same, and we should celebrate diversity. Also, we would like to help you by possibly starting a fundraiser with volunteers or collaborate with a community group to raise money to pay for graffiti removal.
We will be open to any ideas or suggestions you may have regarding downsizing the cost of graffiti removal so we can once again focus on paying for education and getting our art and music back into the curriculum. After our current president, Donald Trump, was elected, there were a number of hate crimes, including racist and other disrespectful graffiti that has suicidal messages, and this resulted in many calls to suicide prevention hotline.
We think that this is unacceptable, and we need to be welcoming and understanding of others and celebrate our differences instead of putting people down.
Thank you for your time, and we hope you will consider our ideas.
Thank you. Just slide it right...
outside as much as I used to. Solar power is one of the most efficient energies, and it is one of the most environmental friendlies. Other energies, like fossil fuels, need to be burned, and this energy causes lots of pollution and it creates the greenhouse effect, heating up our planet. Switching to solar is not the most expensive too, and is good for the environment. And other energies are limited, because they can run out and are very unhealthy. Solar is infinite, because it comes from the sun. Although solar can be expensive and not too many people go solar, I have made up some solutions so people can go solar. I think people should get a tax incentive when they go solar, so it will be easier for people to go solar. Another solution is to make a program to educate kids about solar, so they will see this as a threat and hopefully make a difference in the future. My last solution is to change the law a little bit, so some energies will be banned, and this will be expensive. To change the law that some energies are banned, and this... So people can switch to solar. But solar isn't the cheapest, but it will help in the long run. Thank you for your time and having me, and goodbye.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, my name is Ashwin. Thank you for having me and listening to my issue. I think traffic is a huge problem in Portland. People are sitting in their cars for hours with their engines on while they could be doing something else. Most people have gas cars in Portland, and when their engines are on in traffic, they release extra gas into the atmosphere. I am an environmentalist and care about our atmosphere, so I want to find a solution. A study by the INRI-X confirms the extent of our problem by ranking us the city with the 12th worst commute in the country, and that's 40th in the world. That's out of 240 US cities and 1,064 worldwide. And congestion is expected to get worse in Oregon, according to the Economic Impacts of Congestion Study released at the 2015 Oregon Business Summit. The study said if traffic spending is not increased, the average metropolitan household will be stuck in congestion for 69 hours a year by 2040, triple the time in 2010. The impact on fright-dependent businesses will be even greater, because such congestion can cause them to miss critical shipments, reducing the state's economic competitiveness, because many goods travel through the Portland region. Also, the Portland Bureau of Transportation, echoing many other projections of explosive growth, estimates that by 2035, the city will add 260,000 new residents, commuting to 1,040,000 new jobs. If current habits continue, that means about half a million more daily solo trips. But you must have heard before that we have bad traffic. But my solution is to put toll booths on frequently-used roads, so people who aren't willing to pay the tax will go on less-used roads. My other solution is to put a tax relief on companies that makes flexible starting times, because rush hour is when all businesses start and end, and during that time, everyone is trying to get home, and there's tons of traffic. If companies make flexible starting and ending times, people can go home earlier and later. Since everyone is going home at different times, there won't be as much traffic. By using these ideas, we'll be able to reduce traffic, and by doing that, reduce pollution.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adeline Reed, and I am here to talk to you about an idea I had. I have given you a page with some visual aids to refer to during or after this time. I think that we should place toy lending chests around Portland. What are toy lending chests? If you see a toy that you would play with, you take it out. Just remember to be courteous and put something you don't use in to replace it. That way, another kid can have it, instead of it going and sitting in your house and collecting dust. Something that might seem old and uninteresting to one might be new and exciting to another. I think that having these would build community, because people would be sharing. It would also make people feel more connected and cared for if they're poor and can't afford to buy toys. On the environmental side, it would help too, because another kid can have the toy you put in, instead of it going to the dump and that kid having to buy a toy, then consuming more than we need to. This issue is important to me, because I have toys sitting in my room that I don't use. I feel that I shouldn't, when someone else could be enjoying them. Kids should definitely have access to some toys. According to the Child Development Institute, toys are more than just fun and games for kids. Most toys provide at least some opportunity for the children to learn. The best toys engage your child's senses, spark their imaginations, and encourage them to interact with others. And we all need some stuff. Many of us have taken it too far, though according to the minimalist, the average American household contains more than 300,000 possessions. According to Psychology Today, when we anticipate buying something, it releases a chemical in our brains called dopamine. Dopamine makes us happy, and we want more of it. We can get addicted to this chemical, buying more and more. These around neighborhoods or town would help decrease consumption and compulsory consumption, and encourage people to share and find things they like for no money and no material wasted. What I need from you is permission to place these in some public parks around Portland. Even a few would be okay, but according to Parks and Recreation, there are 144 public parks in Portland. I just want to take the first step to having them all over. To do that, I will need a grant of about $413.68. That would pay for four waterproof boxes to put in four of the parks around Portland. If I get this grant, I have decided to put the boxes in these parks: Washington Park Playground, Jamison Square, Cun Amquas Park, and Peninsula Park. I chose these parks because they all have some open space where I could imagine a toy lending chest going. I also tried to spread them out around Portland. I hope you consider my idea. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So, is that the end of the kids' testimony? I understand there... Do we have more? I understand there's... The teacher is here, Mindha McCandless. Are you here? Did you want to just say for 30 seconds the reason for being here? And I understand you'd like to have a picture with the kids, and so if you could do that, then we could file up here and have a picture with the kids. That'd be a lot of fun.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, you have to speak into the mic, because it's a public meeting. Sorry. I know.
Actually, not everybody in the classbook, because some went to Salem last week to do state issues, but they all picked issues that they cared about and did research in, tried to come up with solutions that were viable, that were involving the government and/or the community. So, thanks for having us.
Great. Thank you for being here, and kids, thank you for your excellent, excellent testimony. It is well received. So why don't we file down here? We'll take a picture.
No items pulled.
Please call the roll.
Fish?
Aye.
Sosman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye.
Consent agenda is adopted. Next item, time certain, 527, please.
Item 527, proclaim May 30, 2017 to be Vanport Day of Remembrance in Portland.
Commissioner Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it keeps getting better. First, we had the Rose Festival Court gracing us this morning, then these wonderful sixth graders and their incredibly creative solutions, and now we're going to honor the Vanport Day of Remembrance. And the way we honor this event is the mayor gets to issue a proclamation. And before he issues the proclamation, I want to invite Laura Lowerty, Ms. Gilmore, Ms. Sims, and Mr. McGee. If you will take seats up at the... And if I haven't got that right, we'll... Laura, if I have the right people? If not, please come forward. She's running the show. And the mayor is going to read the proclamation, and then we're going to hear from our honored guests, and we're also going to acknowledge the other honored guests that are with us in chambers today. So, Mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas our understanding of history shapes our view of the present, and in order to understand where we are going, we must understand where we are from. And whereas 2017 is the 75th anniversary of the construction of Vanport, built in 1942, and whereas Vanport was once the country's largest public housing project in Oregon's second-largest city with a peak population of 40,000, whereas the Vanport community was intended as temporary housing for shipbuilders during World War II and included schools, stores, a hospital, a movie theater, and a two-year college. And whereas Vanport became an experiment in racial integration, for as many as 25% of its residents from all corners of the country were African-American, when African-Americans were less than 1% of the entire state's population. And whereas Vanport was constructed in the Columbia River floodplain and was protected from the river by a series of levees, and whereas the Columbia River flooded on May 30th, 1948, immediately displacing 18,700 residents. And whereas Vanport Mosaic will hold a festival from May 26th through 30th, 2017, to honor and celebrate Vanport as an essential and often-forgotten chapter in Portland's history. Now, therefore, I, Ted Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Roses, do hereby proclaim May 30th, 2017, to be Vanport Day of Remembrance in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this day. So proclaim it.
Good morning. My name is Beatrice Gilmore. I go by B. Gilmore. And the reason for that is because when I migrated from the South, many people did not know... Well, they knew how to pronounce Beatrice, but saying, being from the South, it was Beatrice. I was called a few other forms of Beatrice, Beatrice, which was okay, but I thought, okay, let's have a name that's consistent, and that is B. So, I call myself B. We moved here in 1944, originally from Louisiana and through Las Vegas, Nevada. So, coming from Louisiana was quite different than what I could dream of. But when I landed here in Portland, we moved into Vanport. Vanport, with its apartments and all cultures from all over the United States, and people who had ethnicities different than mine. So, it was an opportunity for mixing. And in order to make a cake, if we were going to make a cake, we would need ingredients. And those ingredients can be found, as you think about the history of Vanport, the ethnicities, the communications that took place, the mingling and the mixing. And so, in order for you and me and all of our populations now to do that, we could learn a lot by studying the history of Vanport and the fact that it was the second-largest city in Portland and had all of the ingredients that we still need today to make a beautiful cake. I thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, B., for being here. We appreciate it.
Good morning, Mayor Ted Wheeler and members...
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Ted Wheeler and members of the Portland City Council. My name is Renze McGee. I am nine years old and was born in Portland, Oregon. I live in northeast Portland with my family. I'm a third grader at Richmond Elementary, where I enjoy learning to speak Japanese, doing math, and reading. I am also the biggest Portland Trailblazers fan. I am honored to be the youngest historian slash producer for the Vanport Mosaic project. I became interested after meeting Ms. Laura at the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Event at Highland Church. I talked to her for over 45 minutes. After that day, I did research about Vanport and attended training at the Portland Community Media. I developed interview questions and interviewed Mr. Kelly, who was a young boy like me when he escaped the floods. He reflected on his childhood with some fun and sad memories. The stories Mr. Kelly shared inspired me to want to learn more by interviewing other survivors. Mr. Kelly and I will also go fishing this summer.
That's great.
Being a part of this local history project has allowed me to better understand my Portland history. History is important to be shared, because it allows us to understand and learn from the past. I feel like my friends, people in the community, and people in the future should know about Vanport. It is important to learn about history such as Vanport, because it also helps you to define your roots and empower you. History allows us to learn from the past and compare changes from back then to now. The Vanport Project allowed me to meet new people, increase my understanding of Portland's history, and learn about my Black community. I learned a lot from the elders and gained new skills that will help me. Learning about Vanport makes me want to advocate with Portland Public Schools to make this part of our curriculum. Local history is just as important as natural history. We must understand our history to have a bright future. Please join us at the upcoming festival. Thank you.
Very good. Excellent.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Shalonda Sims. I am a local artist here. My connection to Vanport is my great-grandmother came here during the war to work in the shipyard, and our family has been here ever since. I am a fourth-generation Oregon... Mr. Kelly and I will also go fishing this summer.
That's great.
Being a part of this local history project has allowed me to better understand my Portland history. History is important to be shared because it allows us to understand and learn from the past. I feel like my friends, people in the community, and people in the future should know about Vanport. It is important to learn about history such as Vanport because it also helps you to define your roots and empower you. History allows us to learn from the past and compare changes from back then to now. The Vanport Project allowed me to meet new people, increase my understanding of Portland's history, and learn about my Black community. I learned a lot from the elders and gained new skills that will help me. Learning about Vanport makes me want to advocate with Portland Public Schools to make this part of our curriculum. Local history is just as important as natural history. We must understand our history to have a bright future. Please join us at the upcoming festival. Thank you.
Very good. Excellent. Who's next?
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Shalonda Sims. I am a local artist here. My connection to Vanport is my great-grandmother came here during the war to work in the shipyard, and our family has been here ever since. I am a fourth-generation Oregonian. My children are fifth generation. Before this all came about, I was researching my family's history, trying to figure out why we were here in Oregon, because there's not a large population of African-Americans here. Upon my research, that's when I found out that we came here because of Vanport. There wasn't much information, only in books and texts, and that didn't give a lot of information about Vanport. So, I was fortunate enough to speak to some people who lived during that time. One person was Stell. They call her Stell. And she has passed away now, but she was one of the first African-American women to be here in Vanport and to work in the shipyards. Another lady, her name is Regina Flowers, and she is like a walking history book on all things Vanport. That sparked me to write a play called Vanport, put some music to it, and that was in 2013. Since then, we have the Vanport Mosaic Festival, we have oral history, and it is growing, and now we have a proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hello. My name is Robert Motsonaga, and I guess I'm a substitute for someone. Anyway, this is the second time we were displaced in Vanport. The first time was during World War II when Japan attacked Pearl Harbor. Being of Japanese descent, we were interned. We were first sent to the Portland Stockyards, and then afterwards, we were sent to the Benidocah Concentration Camp in Benidocah, Idaho. We were in camp for about, from 1942 till the end of the war in 1945. At that time, we couldn't find any affordable housing after the war was over. So, we moved to Vanport, which was affordable at the time, and it was a very diverse area. I mean, you had African-Americans, and you have Latinos, and you have American Indians, and of course, many Caucasians. But at that time, it was sort of like a segregated... I mean, the schools were not segregated, they were integrated. But we lived in different sections, and we lived on Cottonwood Drive in Vanport. And at the time the flood occurred, I was at a movie theater, and there was an announcement on the PA system that the dike broke and that we were all told to evacuate and head for our homes. And when I got to my home, which was several blocks from the theater, we hopped on the car and we picked up two other families with us, so we headed upon Denver Avenue to escape the flood. I could see the waters coming, and it was kind of a very horrific experience because it's gridlocked. I mean, everybody headed out to Denver Avenue, and that was the only way to get into Vanport was through Denver Avenue, going in and out. So, it was quite of a traumatic experience, and like I said, I was eight years old at the time, and I'm glad that they're having this recognition for Vanport. Thank you.
We appreciate your dedication. Laura Lowforti, could you come up for a sec? Because I think we're going to take a picture with everybody, but can you just tell us where the public can get information about the festival? And then, we're going to acknowledge some special guests that are here, and I think we're going to do a photograph. Is that right, Mary Helen?
That would be great.
You do have some signs. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for your special promotion. Can you hear me?
Is that on?
Yeah.
Please join us at the...
Wait, listen, green...
Push the button.
Yeah, push the... There you go. There you go.
Please join us at the Vanport Mosaic Festival, May 26 to 29, in different venues in north and northeast Portland. You can find the program at our website, vanportmosaic.org, and we have programs, we have flyers, and see you there.
Very good. Thank you. You have something to share with us on the signs?
Well, I thought we could use these with the pictures, but... On the tour of the day, there'll be mermaid signs all along the tour with facts about Vanport. I don't know.
So, Mayor, should we take a picture with everybody?
Yep, sure.
My dad, I made it by security with these signs.
So, can we take a photograph over here? Let's get everyone over here, Laura.
Do you want to pop these signs on the chair?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
We can hold them.
Oh, there, okay.
You want to hold them?
Can you undo this one?
Yeah. Folks, why don't we come in here? Young man, nice job. You have a real future. There she is. Ms. Taylor, how are you? Nice to see you.
Good to see you.
Short people on the front.
Who wants us... Young man, you hold the proclamation and open it to the cameras, okay?
But get your face in.
Nine years old.
Who am I blocking?
Big smiles, everybody.
We'll be shorter than we ever were.
What a gathering.
Not as good as Rose Festival, Francis.
My knees are giving way.
They all had the perfect smiles. Yeah, well, yeah, trained professionals.
Keep getting better. Still getting better. Dan, I'm going to turn this next one over to you, okay? Is that...
Okay.
Okay, 528?
Sure.
All right, folks, while we're getting settled in for the next item, Susan, could you please call the roll on... Or, excuse me, could you please call the next item?
Item 528, declare intent to initiate local improvement district formation proceedings to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements in the northeast 27th Avenue and Holland Street Local Improvement District.
Very good. Commissioner Saltzman?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to our very capable LID Administrator, Andrew Abbey.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Saltzman. I'm Andrew Abbey, Local Improvement District Administrator. Sue, could we switch to the presentation? This is a map of the proposed northeast 27th Avenue and Holland Street LID. This area is zoned for heavy industrial usage. 27th and Holland are local streets in an industrial area just south of northeast Columbia Boulevard. This is a fairly small LID with four property owners' petition for inclusion in the LID. So, right now, we have LID support of 95%. We got petition support from three of the four property owners. We got no support from one of the four property owners. And I'll be passing out an amendment here. We did receive correspondence from the property owner who did not petition in favor, and he has been asked to be removed from the LID. And normally, that is difficult to do, but in this instance, we're not fully reconstructing the street. We're building curb, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements and doing minor pavement preservation work. So, it is feasible to do that in this instance. So, I do recommend that council adopt this amendment to remove 2706 Northeast Columbia Boulevard from the LID, and that obligation for drainage improvements would be deferred until redevelopment of the property.
Is a motion... Do we need to put that on the table?
I would move that amendment.
Commissioner Saltzman moves the amendment. Commissioner Fish, seconds. Any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll on the amendment.
Fish?
Aye.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaly?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Amendment's accepted. Continue. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you, Mayor Wheeler. So, this next slide is of that property that you just removed from the LID. That is about a 65-year-old building and clearly will redevelop, and then we'll get the full extent of the improvements. You notice the bus stop sign there on the right. This area is along a fairly frequent transit service line, and so, we're looking forward to making some sidewalk and curb ramp upgrades. You can see right now that what we have out there right now is kind of a wide swath of pavement. We really don't have any stormwater management. You can see that kind of vegetated area on the right side of the screen. Basically, the stormwater comes off the street, and it basically flows adjacent to or on private property, and so, we're going to build stormwater facilities. This is northeast Holland Street. It's the site of a future transfer station. You'll be hearing more property owner testimony about that. Northeast 27th Avenue used to connect to Lombard Street. It became a dead end when the rail crossing was closed a number of years ago. And so, the LID is pretty straightforward. We're just going to realign the street, shift it about five or six feet to the west, and then build a dead end, stormwater facility, curb, and sidewalks, and facilitate future...
Our street is now blank. Is there something you...
Nope, we're at the end of the presentation. So, that's all the testimony I have for you today. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I believe we have three people here to testify.
Very good. Any immediate questions? Seeing none, we'll call a public testimony?
We have three signed up. Jason Wright, Steve McGinnis, and Mark Newsom.
Come on up.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
My name is Jason Wright.
Thank you.
I am an attorney from Fullon Alterman Richardson. I am working with McGinnis Investments, who is the owner of the property that's subject to this LID improvement. My specific task has been to be working with the DEQ relative to some usage on the property. Ultimately, we're trying to develop it to become a transfer station permit. River City Environmental, who Mr. McGinnis is here and will talk about, has been using the site currently for some street sweepings. We stage stuff there till we get a full load, and then we take it off-site. We have been working with the DEQ for a period of a year to try and come up with a way to environmentally-friendly build a transfer station permit. One of the things that I'd point out is that as part of this LID project, which we're greatly appreciative of from the city, is that we will be the first private and only the third entity in the state of Oregon to actually have an environmentally-friendly transfer station. So, through the use of this LID specifically with regard to the stormwater issues, which are of clear importance for everyone when you're dealing with these types of materials, it's going to allow for that type of development to occur, and it's going to benefit all of us ultimately in the creation of jobs and an environmentally-friendly permit for transfer of waste. So, thank you very much. I appreciate the Commissioner's time, the Mayor's time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Council. I'm Steve McGinnis, River City Environmental. We've been in the waste collection business here in Portland for over 40 years. We have, right now, a little over 125 employees. This site here, we'd like to develop it. We look to add anywhere from two to five more employees on this site and to be able to handle some of our waste streams here. When coming on board, this is actually our third LID to be involved with, with the City of Portland. And we'd like to thank the folks that we've been able to work with, especially being able to work alongside of Andrew Abbey. I have to say that I was really the skeptic of saying I didn't... I never wanted to see an LID, never wanted to play in one of them. We actually have a site where we've done two of them on, and this will be another site that we'll be doing the third one. Right now, we just ask for your support, and we look forward to being able to partner with the city again and to achieve this. Also, we're looking forward to inviting the mayor, all the council folks out, and the people that have participated in the City of Portland to help us on another site that we have one of these on. We actually have one of them. It was on 109th, and our property started at one site and went through to the 112th. And everything good that it's brought to our business and to the neighborhood. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that very much.
I'm Mark Newsom, also with River City. I just wanted to add that in addition to the 125 folks that we employ in our existing location, that we've been working very hard to find additional real estate that we can further develop to keep ourselves within the City of Portland, and we appreciate your support on this property. It will really help us continue to grow our business and stay within the city, which is really a challenge today with the availability of property. So, this is very important to us, to retain people here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any further public testimony?
I just had one question. We're talking about a solid waste transfer station?
Yes.
Okay. So, you referred to it as environmentally friendly. I'm just curious, what makes it environmentally friendly? Not to say that a transfer station isn't, but...
Well, one of the issues that's come up and that the DEQ is sort of cluing in on and working through right now is sort of how and the ways in which different materials get staged, and they're protective of environmental issues as well as water runoff, which is obviously a big concern when you have these types of things. And I know, Commissioner Fritz, this is near and dear to your heart. So, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do because of the circumstances with the property is that we want to create a functional, usable building that is going to be able to house temporarily street sweeping wastes and other wastes in a way that is going to allow it to be properly contained until such time as it can go to where it needs to go. And one of the things that we see throughout the city right now is sort of how is that going to play out? And the DEQ is taking an active role in trying to make sure those changes happen. So, we're happy that we're a frontrunner in that and working specifically with the DEQ for the past year to talk about what is it that we really want to do here for the City of Portland to make sure that these sweepings are properly contained, we don't have water runoff, and to the extent that we can, keeping them in an environmentally safe manner so that we don't have any issues that arise. don't have any issues that arise.
Okay. Thank you. Very good. Any further questions, colleagues? Very good. Please call the role.
Fish?
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Aye.
Saltzman?
Thank you, and thank you, Andrew, once again. Aye.
Udaly?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for being here. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The resolution is adopted, is amended. Next item, please. All the way to the regular agenda.
Item 546, ensure tax fairness in the sharing economy and delegate subpoena power to the Revenue Division.
Commissioner Fish?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to invite Thomas Landham and Ken McGare forward, and they will be presenting this morning. This past February, Portland City Council referred a ballot measure to the voters, 26194. It was designed to expand and clarify our authority to regulate the short-term rental industry. And just last week, voters overwhelmingly approved these changes. This update to the charter gives the City Council broader authority to adapt to changes in technology and industry practices to ensure tax fairness and to protect public health and safety. As my colleagues know, the city of Portland has had difficulty obtaining regulatory compliance from certain internet companies like Airbnb, HomeAway, and other short-term rental platforms. This includes paying their fair share of lodging taxes and ensuring that all of their guests are safe. The ballot measure essentially raised a fundamental question of tax fairness. Specifically, is it fair for a mom-and-pop bed and breakfast in St. John's to pay the lodging tax while out-of-state companies like HomeAway refuse to pay it? And the answer the voters gave us was a resounding no. So today, colleagues, we're moving quickly to implement the will of the voters by updating our code language and making the changes necessary to ensure that HomeAway and others in the short-term rental industry play by the rules. We're also moving to give the Revenue Bureau new subpoena authority, which they need in order to ensure that short-term rentals are safe. With us today are Thomas Landham, Director of the Revenue Bureau, and Ken McGare, Deputy City Attorney, to walk us through what the resolution does and says. And Mayor, I want to use this occasion to thank both of these gentlemen, and particularly Ken, who drafted the language on the ballot measure and worked with us, and we put this on the ballot, for their work. And a special thank you to the voters that took the time to understand this issue and gave us a big vote of confidence in this most recent election. So Thomas, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good morning. Again, my name is Thomas Landham. I'm the Director of the City Portland Revenue Division, and joining me is Ken McGare from the City Attorney's Office. I think Commissioner Fish covered the background pretty well, so I will keep this brief. The resolution before you today directs the Revenue Division and the City Attorney's Office to draft an ordinance delegating a subpoena authority to the Revenue Division for the enforcement of provisions of the transient lodging tax code as they relate to the short-term rental platforms. Short-term rental platforms have argued that federal law preempts local ordinances from requiring them to provide host data short of a subpoena. We also intend to bring forward other amendments to the city code. For example, at present, the code prohibits short-term rental platforms from displaying listings unless they also display a city-issued permit number. This provision also appears to have a federal preemption problem. To resolve this, we intend to follow San Francisco's approach, which is to make it a violation of city code for a short-term rental platform to accept a fee or compensation for listing a non-permitted location. This is a very subtle but important distinction that does not run afoul of federal law. So that's an example of another code amendment that we will likely be bringing forward in June, and there may be others. So these code amendments, again, will come forward in June, and I can stop there, and Ken and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, colleagues? Very good. Is there any public testimony on this item? Very good. Call the role.
Fish?
Well, again, I want to thank the council for forwarding the ballot measure to the ballot, Mayor. I want to thank you for joining me in advocating for the ballot measure. I want to particularly thank all the editorial boards that took up the issue, looked at it critically, and gave us a thumbs up, and helped us convince the voters this was the right thing to do. The money that we will ultimately collect in ensuring that there's a level playing field and there's tax fairness will be money that we use to provide basic services, but in particular, will help us address our housing crisis. So this is really important, that we get it right, and we make sure everyone pays their fair share. And the information that Thomas will be seeking with subpoenas is the kind of information we need to be able to say to guests and visitors, you are safe if you rent a short-term rental in the city of Portland. So this is a big step forward. I'm grateful to Thomas and Ken for their good work. And I also want to give a shout out to my Chief of Staff and others in my office who've been working on this, and thanks them. Aye.
Saltzman?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish, and Revenue Division, and Ken McGare. Aye.
Udaly?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish and Revenue Division. And I would just like to add that a few years ago, we set some reasonable rules and regulations around short-term rentals, and some platforms have been better at complying than others. But they've also afforded their host ways to kind of circumvent our rules and regulations. So I think that we need to strengthen them, and I'm pleased to hear that we'll be doing that. Aye.
Fritz?
Commissioner Fish, thank you for your leadership on this very important issue. Aye.
Wheeler?
I'd also like to extend my thanks. This was one of those fairly arcane ballot measures, and I know that the Revenue Division and Commissioner Fish and his staff spent a considerable amount of time going through the feathered detail of the proposed ballot measure. It was a landslide victory, Commissioner Fish, and I think that's always a good thing. To some degree, the Commissioner and I would joke about some of the arcane details, but the reality is that this was a really important ballot measure. Didn't get the attention, but it was a really important ballot measure because it gave us, as the regulatory body, the tools we need to enforce the regulations fairly across the board. And as Commissioner Fish said correctly in his opening remarks, this was also about tax fairness. So I think it was very, very important that it passed, and I do thank all the people who worked so hard on it, and certainly the voters who saw the wisdom in this important measure as well. I vote aye, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. Next item, please.
547, amend fee schedules for tree permits.
Short and to the point, Commissioner Fritz, I don't know if you had any comments you'd like to make, or if we just can turn this over?
I actually do. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you.
Portland Parks and Recreation, as we know, is largely a general fund bureau. It also charges fees for its permitting services, and it aims for cost recovery in many cases. However, in the case of tree permits, we set the policy guidance that we would not be charging for cost recovery in order to encourage compliance with the regulations. So we're going to move a little bit closer to cost recovery. The cost recovery right now for tree-related fees is about 30 percent. This proposal only inches forward with 32 percent. Until we have a council discussion and a direction to move more to complete cost recovery, I felt more comfortable with a smaller change. But as the council wisely adopted or will adopt for sure, the budget note requiring Portland Parks and Recreation to come back to look with a proposal on how to have less reliance on general fund, I would suggest that bringing the tree fund fees to cost recovery, the tree program, is something that we should consider. And I'd like to turn it over to Jeff Schaefer, who this may be his last time of test before in the council, before he's going to be the Dean of Finances of Clackamas County College.
Excellent.
Yeah. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Jeff Schaefer. I'm the Finance Manager for Portland Parks and Rec. I'm here today to get approval for the 2017-18 fee schedule for our tree permitting program for Urban Forestry Division. Some background, Title 11 Tree Code was implemented in 2015, and with it, we increased our regulatory responsibility for the Portland Parks and Rec Urban Forestry Division. The fees associated in this schedule are for supporting the delivery of those services associated with that regulatory service. As the Commissioner mentioned, it's going up roughly from a 30% cost recovery to 32% cost recovery. Overall, globally, that's about an 8% increase over the current year's rates. That comes roughly from about 3% of inflationary costs, which are cost of living, cost along with another 5% that came through the budgetary process to displace the general fund subsidy by 5%. And therefore, that's the other 5% of that raise in those fees. The increase, one thing I think I was going to note with the 32% cost recovery is that with that, that means you're using general fund subsidy for every one of these permits that gets pulled and that we provide those services on. The way that translates, it really means that the Urban Forestry Division only has so many of these they could do in a year and remain within their own general fund operating budget. So as the economy improves and there's more and more of these permits being pulled, it's harder for that Urban Forestry Division to respond within a timely manner because they can still only respond to, like, let's say, 6,000 permits in a year. But if we have 75,000 being pulled, it creates like a three-week backlog in the timing of those permits. So I think it's just important, when you have full cost recovery, like, most other bureaus are 75% to 100% cost recovery. You can just increase your staffing levels to accommodate the demand. But with Urban Forestry, they would overspend their budget if they tried to do that. So I think it's just parallel conversations that happen that's important to just correlate the 32%. Still has some subsidy built into it in order to help encourage the fees get, or the permits get used, so.
And I'd just like to add to that, that we are also mindful of the cost of permits in general, and that a direction from the Mayor earlier this year had been to try to keep that level or reduce even. So that's another of the policy questions to be discussed.
So without any questions?
So I guess what is the impact of a tree permit not being granted in a timely manner?
I think with it not being granted in a timely manner would be more of an impact to the development community that's, you know, if you have a 21-day delay just due to the structural issues of the program, that's probably impacting their cost on the development side. So that's, it's just a customer service issue, really, at the end of the day.
Okay. Thanks.
And just to further clarify, most of the fees here are associated with development and restoration. There's only two non-development-related fee updates. One is the $25 increase on the planting and establishment fee in lieu, which is per inch, from 300 to 325 per inch. The cost recovery would be 480. And these funds go into the Tree Planting and Preservation Fund, per the code. And the other is a $250 increase in the programmatic permit applications from 5,500 to 5,750. Cost recovery would be 6,773. And the total estimated increase from the new fees is 91,400.
Excellent. Thank you. Very good. Is there any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. Any further comments or questions?
Well, just to further note that, as I said, the annual revenue from the new fees is 91,400. This corresponds to the reduction in the Urban Forestry General Fund revenue by 100,000, which the council agreed to in principle and will vote on. It still obviously makes it even more of a hole with 8,600 to get to the number that we put in the budget.
Very good. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Fritz, and to the tree program for working hard to find ways to make this a self-sustaining program. So I appreciate the good work that went into this. Unless there's any other comment?
Just thank you again to Jeff Schaefer. He's certainly taught me a lot over the five years I've been in charge of Portland Parks and Recreation. Really appreciate your service. Clackamas County.
Well, I'm going to appreciate your guidance and leadership, along with Commissioner Fish, over the years I've been, my 23 years here, so. Thank you.
Very good. Congratulations on your new guidance.
Thank you.
Very good. This is a non-emergency first reading. It moves to second reading. Next item, please.
Item 548, accept contract with Kodiak Pacific Construction for the construction of the Road 10 Mile Post 3 to 4.6 and Road 10 Mile Post 4.6 to 6.2 project as complete. Release, retainage, and authorize final payment.
Mayor, we're joined this morning with, by Teresa Elliott, the Chief Engineer of the Water Bureau. This is a project closeout, including authorizing final payment. The project was originally budgeted for $2,022,202. Say that three times quickly. The final construction contract total was $1,431,000 and change, which is 29% under the original contract amount. This decrease was accomplished by reducing the full subgrade reconstruction in many areas due to better subgrade conditions than were anticipated. And Teresa Elliott is here to answer any of your questions.
I'm Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer, Portland Water Bureau. The only thing I would add is that that contract was also done with 64% MWESB participation.
Wow.
And our prime contractor was a WESB contractor.
So let me just, I'll make a comment, and maybe I'll ask a question here. The comment is, number one, thank you for bringing this project in, basically 30% under budget. I'm not sure that the narrative on government is necessarily consistent with the reality of the work that you've done on that point. How did you get such excellent results with regard to MWESB contracting?
Primarily, our prime contractor was an MW contractor. And then, so we would have had 100%, except that they subcontracted a little bit of their work out to non-MWESB contractors, so.
So the key is the prime contractor.
The key is the prime contractor in this case. Road construction, there are a lot of MW contractors that are capable of doing the work. And then, as far as going, coming in under budget, that will affect our percentage as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions? Any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
I'll accept a motion.
So moved?
Moved to accept the report.
Commissioner Fish moves to the report. Commissioner Fritz seconds the report. Please call the role.
Fish?
Thank you, Teresa. And we have, I guess, two other items will be.
Yes, I do. That's why I thought I'd just sit here.
So settle in. Thank you.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaly?
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you for your good work. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The report's accepted. Thank you. Next item.
Item 549, authorize a contract with Corolo Engineers, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $291,852 for design and construction support services with Conduit 2 Trestle Upgrades Project.
Commissioner Fish?
Mayor, we welcome back Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer of the Water Bureau this morning. And... She hasn't aged a day.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
This contract and the work that would be authorized will strengthen the resilience of conduit number two to withstand natural disasters and as part of the 2015 Conduits Rehabilitation Plan. The estimated average MWESB participation on this contract is 74,200, or a little over 25% of the total contract dollars. And Teresa Elliott is here to answer your questions.
So the conduit, again, Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer, Portland Water. The conduit trestles, those are above ground, places along our pipeline that are above ground, either in a support system or on a bridge, that, so they're very vulnerable to us from natural disasters as well as potentially man-made incidences. So we've been working on removing those trestles and getting them buried and reducing our risks on those for the last 10, 15 years. And this is two of our more critical ones that are still remaining. All total, we started with something like 20 of them. And so we are in the process of eliminating those as quickly as we can. As Commissioner said, this is a 25% MWESB participation for subcontracting, and it's a negotiated contract process that we did through Bureau Procurement Services and through the normal RFP process. And I'm available to answer questions.
Very good. Any questions? Is there any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. This is a non-emergency first reading of an ordinance. It moves to second reading. Next item, please.
Item 550, authorize a contract with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the Council Crest Roof Replacement Project at an estimated cost of $550,000.
Commissioner Fish?
Mayor, we're joined by Teresa Elliott, Chief Engineer of the Water Bureau. And by contract, she's eligible for a bonus if she testifies on three or more items in any one day at council. As my colleagues may know, the existing roof of the Council Creek potable water tank and upper tank walls are severely corroded and must be corroded. and upper tank walls are severely corroded and must be replaced immediately. And Teresa Elliott is here to answer your questions.
Teresa Elliott, chief engineer, Portland Water Bureau, for the record. So we're asking for, we're asking for the authorization to solicit a construction contract to, using the traditional low bid process, we will be using the city's pre-qualification list of certified contractors that are capable of doing the work. And we will be going out for contract bid. Our estimated, engineer's estimate for this is about $550,000. And I'm available to answer questions.
Questions, colleagues?
Do you have any guesses to when this project might be being constructed?
We're trying to, actually, yes, I do. We are hoping to put this out to bid next winter and then start construction next April, April 2018, and then be complete by February of 2019. And then we've been working with the Parks Bureau and P-Bot and the local residences for traffic impacts. That'll be the primary impact.
Thank you. I did notice in my write-up that the park will be closed for five days.
Does that sound right, Chris?
We hope much less than five days.
I hope much less than five days. You know, just for folks to be aware, many of our parks, in partnership with Transportation Water Bureau, there are occasionally construction projects have to happen, so I'm glad to hear that.
And it may be, once we get closer to it, it may be that we don't have to close the entire park down, but that we just close off portions of it to make it safe.
Thank you.
And we'll know that as we get closer.
How often do the roofs of these structures need to be replaced?
That's a good question. I don't have that answer, and I can get back to that.
They're pretty rare occurrence.
Well, it's, this is a 50-year-old tank, and it's a metal tank, so it, it's, this is the first time it's been replaced.
Very good. Okay, great. Thank you. Any public testimony on this item?
And no one signed up.
This is a non-emergency first reading of an ordinance. It moves to second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony today. Next item, please.
Item 551, authorize an agreement with Clackamas County in the amount of $210,425 to acquire a 30-acre conservation and access easement.
Commissioner Fish.
Mayor, I request that this matter be held over to 2:00 PM on Thursday.
Seeing no, yes, seeing no disagreement.
By agreement with your office.
Very good. We will hold that over till 2:00 PM this Thursday. Next item, please.
552, authorize an agreement with the, with, excuse me, Trinet, for an estimated amount of $20,080 to implement the Environmental Services Project Southwest Yam Hill Morrison to Southwest First and 13th Project.
Is there any further council discussion or deliberation on this matter? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Salsman. Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please.
Authorize a competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder for construction of the citywide sewer rehabilitation project.
This is also a second reading. Any further deliberations on the part of the council? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please.
Number 554, authorize the rates and charges for water and water-related services during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, and fix an effective date.
Mayor, may I be heard before the vote? Please. I have received an inquiry, and I want to just clarify it for the sake of my colleagues. Yesterday, each of you got a memo from the Water Bureau advising you that the Oregon Health Authority has revoked the variants that saved us the cost of treating our water over the past five years, effective in September of this year. In response to that, we have scheduled a work session for June 27th for the purpose of updating the council on the action taken by the Oregon Health Authority. And we have directed the Water Bureau to come forward with all the various options that are before the council based on that action. That will include treatment options with updated cost estimates and potential rate impacts. But I want to be very clear, Mayor, and colleagues. Whatever the council decides, and it ultimately is a council decision, that decision will have no impact on rates for the period July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018. And I wanted to clarify that on the record.
Thank you for that clarification, Commissioner. It's an important one. Any further council discussion? This is a second reading. Please call the roll.
Fish.
Well, I want to thank the Water Bureau, Director Stewart and his team, and all the professionals who work with the council in every year in developing a budget and setting the rates. I want to thank all the folks in the community who provide oversight over the utilities, including the Portland Utility Board and the Citizens Utility Board of Oregon. And I want to thank the folks who testified and my colleagues and their staffs for scrubbing the proposal. This is the fourth year that we've been able to lower the rate of, for water services below the forecast. And I think over the last four years, if you look at the trend line, the combined rate increase has gone from about 6% to 4%. As the mayor noted, it is still, combined rate is still above the rate of inflation. However, if you lived in a number of suburban communities, you'd pay more for your water. We deliver clean, safe, reliable water to almost a million people in the region, and our goal is to charge a fair price and to provide good value. And I think the rates this year reflect that. Aye.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz?
Thank you, Commissioner Fish. Your ongoing stewardship of the utilities. Aye.
Wheeler?
I also want to thank Commissioner Fish, and I want to thank the Water Bureau who have worked diligently. I mean, this is my first time as mayor to actually see how hard they work and how our utility oversight infrastructure works to keep utility rates as low as possible. And I also want to thank Commissioner Fish for his excellent stewardship on this. Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please. We're actually making you play catch-up today. That's sort of unusual.
Right. Item 555, revise sewer and stormwater rates, charges, and fees in accordance with the fiscal year 2017-2018 sewer user rate study.
Commissioner Fish.
A vote, Mayor.
I'm sorry. This is a, this is also a second reading. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Fish.
Mayor and colleagues, I want to thank Director Mike Jordan and his team for all the work that they put into preparing the recommendations for council. Again, our oversight bodies, the public, my colleagues and their staff for scrubbing those recommendations. And Mayor, I want to acknowledge in the budget that you proposed, that you have authorized the Bureau to make some additional investments over the next 10 years. And Director Jordan has proposed a very compelling vision over the next 10 years, which is to get as close to 100% sustainability in the condition of our assets as possible with the ultimate goal, and it's an audacious goal, of becoming the first utility of its kind in the country with a pay-as-you-go system for maintaining its assets. Now, we are different than other bureaus in that we have dedicated revenue through the rates. And if P-Bot and Parks had dedicated revenue, they would be in a different situation in terms of the condition of their assets. But we're close to 70% good or better condition of assets because of the generosity of our rate payers. And the director has laid out a vision, at least for BES, to get close to 100%. And I think that's a worthy goal, and I thank you for your support on that. Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz?
Commissioner Fish, I remember when these two votes were amongst our most controversial, and both chambers would be stacked with people yelling at us for that reason. So again, I very much appreciate what you're doing and also very much support having 100% maintenance ongoing. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Commissioner. Next item, please.
556, revise residential solid waste and recycling collection rates and charges effective July 1, 2017.
This is a second reading. Any further council discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz?
To recap, after many years of being completely stable and not increasing it, this increase is less than 1%. So thanks very much, Mayor, to your team in the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability for their work on this. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Code's amended. Next item.
557, authorize $100,000 for the establishment of the Portland and the Streets Community Grant Program to award grants through a competitive process for the period of July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019.
So Dan, Commissioner Salsman had to leave, but he asked me if I would read his opening remarks, so I'd like to do that. "I'm proud to bring forward this exciting new community grants program developed for new and creative projects that encourage transportation safety in our neighborhoods throughout the city. The Portland Bureau of Transportation will allocate $100,000 to the competitive grant process." Irene Schawferman, did I get that right, Irene?
You did.
Great. Irene Schawferman, Public Involvement Coordinator for the Portland Bureau of Transportation, is here to talk more about the program and is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And good morning. As introduced, my name is Irene Schawferman. I'm the Public Involvement Coordinator for the Portland Bureau of Transportation. I'm excited to be here today to introduce and seek your support for the Portland and the Streets Community Grant Program. As mentioned, this grant program will distribute $100,000 in grants, up to $20,000 each through a competitive process this summer. We've provided Exhibit A, which is the grant handbook and application packet. And I wanted to quickly go through some of the program goals and the purpose. So the goals of this program are to invest in small-scale, community-driven projects focused on transportation safety, equity, innovation, and placemaking; to engage communities historically underrepresented in and underserved by P-Bot programming, including but not limited to communities of color, immigrant, and refugee communities, low-income individuals and families, youth, people with disabilities, gay, lesbian, bi, and transgendered people. We also seek to supplement P-Bot's existing priorities and capital projects, to generate new and innovative ideas for P-Bot to consider in the long term, and to decrease policy and process barriers to idea implementation. And lastly, to strengthen collaboration between P-Bot and community partners by providing hands-on technical support during the project implementation process. The program priorities will include events in the streets, creative community infrastructure, innovative community engagement, expanding the urban trails network, and small-scale transportation and safety projects. And we see this as an extension and a supplement to our livable street strategy, Vision Zero, and other priorities that our bureau is currently implementing. We've included in the application other examples and sample budget amounts of the grants or the projects that we seek to support, but really, we're looking for community to bring us any ideas that they have, and we'll work with them to help see them to fruition. We are seeking, we are really seeing this as an opportunity to expand and strengthen our public involvement with community members. And we worked with members of our budget and Bureau Advisory Committee to develop what you see before you today. We have also consulted with other city bureaus who have current or previous grant programs, including ONI, BES, and Portland Parks and Recreation. What you'll see in here is that we've included a strong equity focus. Our team will be focusing on outreach in diverse communities. We'll host at least two community information sessions and provide staff and consultant technical assistance during the planning and implementation period of the program. Our goal is to have all grantee projects implemented by the end of 2018, and we look forward to reporting back on any, all of the program's success. So thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you, Irene. Commissioner Fritz.
I note that both the ordinance and the financial statement says that it's coming into the next year's budget. What's the source of the $100,000?
My under, well, we have someone from our budget team who can give you the best answer.
Good morning.
Ken Kinosh, the Office of Management. The source of the revenue is our general transportation revenue.
So basically, gas tax revenue?
Yeah, gas tax and parking revenues.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Irene. Support it.
Very good. Commissioner Udaley.
What's the URL for this grant, so I can send people to it?
It will be, it's a city URL, so we will announce it formally by the end of this week, so we'll be sending it out to the community, and we'll make sure that all your offices have that information.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any further.
Can commissioners apply for a grant?
Any further questions?
That's what we had to do.
Is there any public testimony on this item?
Does the answer to that question determine your vote on this matter, Commissioner?
No one signed up.
Very good. This is a non-emergency first reading. It moves to second reading. Thank you. Looks really exciting. Thank you, Irene.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item, please.
558, revise transportation fees, rates, and charges for fiscal year 2017-18 and fix an effective date.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The rates, fees, and charges are adopted. Next item, please.
559, vacate a portion of northeast Cooch Street east of northeast Third Avenue, subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Any further council deliberations? Again, this is the second reading. Please call the roll.
Fish.
Aye.
Udaley.
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. And just for people watching, we've already had deliberations, staff testimony and public testimony in all of these items that we're just calling the roll on for second reading. Next item, please.
560, approve fiscal year 2017-18 cost of living adjustments to pay rates for nonrepresented classifications and elected officials. Specify the effect upon employees and the classifications involved and provide for payment.
Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning.
If you could state your name for the record, please.
My name is Elizabeth Nunes. I'm the Classification and Compensation Manager in the Bureau of Human Resources. And I have to say, I'm really glad I didn't follow up on the children's presentations because I was very humbled. I am here to present to you an ordinance to approve fiscal year 2017-2018 cost of living adjustment to nonrepresented classifications and for elected officials. The amount is 2.2% this year. And just to know the cost distribution, for the fiscal year, it's a total of $3,816,000, with 1.8 million of it coming out of the general fund, and then the remaining 2-plus million from the non-general fund bureaus. Any questions?
Thank you. I don't think there are. So this moves to a second reading.
And there was no sign up for testimony?
So I would like to note that my pay has finally become more per hour than it was when I was working at OHSU. So that makes a significant milestone for me, although I would have to say that per hour, I think I'm still making about minimum wage. But thank you very much.
Congratulations for that.
Yeah, congratulations. Okay, can you call the next item?
561, authorize revenue bonds in an amount sufficient to provide not more than $20 million to finance space in a project to be located on Southwest Fourth Avenue and Southwest Montgomery Street.
Hold on.
Okay.
It's a second reading. Fish?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Good call. Great report. Next item, please.
Next is 561-1. It's accept bid of Paul Brothers, Inc. for the Spring Garden Park Development Project.
I'm sorry, I have, I have a question. So 560 was a non-emergency first reading.
Next is 561-1. It's accept bid of Paul Brothers, Inc. for the Spring Garden Park Development Project.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So, 560 was a non-emergency first reading. Why are we voting on it?
You voted on 561.
Oh, that was 561?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, you're on 561-1?
Correct.
Very good.
That's right.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks, Commissioner, for the great job.
Thank you.
Got way ahead of me.
I was trying to make it through.
Passed his gavel in the way.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Wheeler and Mr. Fritz.
Could you do me a favor and just pull the mic a little bit closer and name for the record?
Okay.
Awesome, thanks.
My name is Lauren McGuire. I'm the Development Program Manager for Portland Parks and Recreation. With me is Travis Rubal, the Capital Projects Manager III on the project, who's working to bring this to fruition, as well as Larry Pellet from the procurement, and Andrew Abbey, RP by Capital Project Manager III. We're here today to accept the bid and to give you a brief presentation. We're going to be accepting the bid from Paul Brothers for the Spring Garden Park construction for $3.1 million. We will also give you a brief overview of the project, and then we'll be able to answer any questions that you have on the project. The rendering up that you're looking at shows Spring Garden Park, which is located between southwest Spring Garden to the north, or top, and southwest Dolph Court to the south, or the bottom. Spring Garden Park project purpose is to further develop the existing park with a new playground, splash pad, and loo in the area towards the bottom left of the image. Also, a picnic shelter and picnic area with contemplative garden toward the bottom right of the image. We've got ADA accessible connections winding through the park from southwest Dolph Court to southwest Spring Garden. We've also got a meadow with hillside plantings that will provide habitat. And we've got a gathering area toward the top of the image by the stream daylighting facility, and then lighting and street frontage improvements. The primary goals of the park design are to maintain it and enhance the existing character of the park with its broad open areas, as well as to provide recreational opportunities with facilities that are consistent with those of our other neighborhood parks, including pedestrian connectivity in the neighborhood, and to protect the natural resource areas. In 2017, we completed 12 months of public engagement process that included four public meetings and five project advisory committee meetings. We received great feedback from everyone about the Spring Garden design. We also heard that there was a need for increased pedestrian access through the park, which we've accommodated. As part of the park development process, we also learned that PBOB would require street frontage improvements. So, we've been working with Andrew on a local improvement district for those improvements. He'll tell you a little bit about that. The frontage improvements at the park include a dedication of property of seven feet on Spring Garden and also on Dolph Court, and this will allow the construction of sidewalks, stormwater facilities, and also street trees. So, again, to review, we're here today to accept the bid from Paul Brothers for the Spring Garden Park construction and LID street improvements for $3,106.59 and 32 cents. This includes the local improvement district costs as well. The bids came in a little bit higher than we anticipated from the engineer's estimate, which was 2.75 million. This construction bid cost is about 11% over what we had estimated. We think they're higher because of the current construction boom, because of the time of year of the bid, because of the steep topography with our construction access difficulties, the high water table we have, and the higher than normal pricing that we're seeing. We're working on value engineering, changing some of the materials, and deleting a few of the items to deliver a park for the funding appropriated. In closing, thank you for allowing us to present on the Spring Garden Park. And at this time, Larry will talk about the procurement, and then Andrew, followed by Andrew, to talk about the local improvement district. And Travis is here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Larry Pellet from Procurement Services.
Morning.
You have before you the procurement report recommending a contract award to Paul Brothers. The engineer's estimate on this project was 2.75 million, with a confidence level of moderate. On April 6, 2017, four bids were received, and Paul Brothers is the low bidder at $3,106.31, which is 11.3% over the estimate. Portland Parks Recreation conducted a bid analysis and determined that there were three primary factors that contributed to the increase in cost: construction site access issues, high labor demand in the local market, and the timing of the bid, which is at the same time as many other public agencies and private companies are in the construction market. The city put forward an aspirational goal for DMW ESP subcontractor and supplier utilization at 20% of the hard construction costs for the project. Paul Brothers identified nine divisions of work for DMW ESP certified firm participation, with subcontracting participation at 28.36%, with work being performed in concrete, hydroseating, masonry, metal fabrication, place surface installation, fencing, trucking, flagging, and survey. Paul Brothers is a certified emerging small business, so the combined prime and subcontractor participation in this project is 91.2%. It probably should be noted that Paul Brothers could self-perform a significant portion of the subcontracted work, but they have chosen to spread the wealth in support of the city's programs and goals. Any questions?
I'm Andrew Abbey. I'm the city's LID Administrator. Thank you. I'm Andrew Abbey. I'm the city's LID Administrator. So, when I first started working with parks, they had a requirement, as Lauren mentioned, to build sidewalks along the frontage of Spring Garden Park. We didn't think it made a lot of sense to build an island of sidewalks that didn't connect anything. So, we did some out, PBOB and Parks did some joint outreach to the community, and we formed a local improvement district to build not only sidewalk improvements, but also stormwater improvements, particularly on Dolph Court between the park and southwest 30th Avenue. Those are the multifamily apartment units along that street would have pedestrian access, both to the park to the west and also to transit and shopping to the east. And in addition to that, we're going to be doing some pavement restoration on southwest Dolph Court. So, of the LID amount, we formed an LID with $725,000 in funding from Parks and $547,552 from private property owners, for a total amount of $1,272,000. Just to clarify the bid that came in, the street portion of the bid actually came in pretty favorable. We estimated LID formation, a construction amount of $583,000, and the street portion of the bid came in at $640,000. But we actually had built in some betterments into the project, such as some additional pavement work. So, from PBOB's point of view, we actually landed really close to the original budget for the, for the street improvements. And I really wanted to recognize my colleagues in PBOB. They've done a really exceptional job of designing this project in a difficult area with difficult stormwater requirements and great issues, and they've done a really good job of rising to the challenge. And then finally, I just wanted to note that I received a written request yesterday from a property owner to the west of Spring Garden Park on southwest Spring Garden Street to join the LID. So, I will be bringing an amendment to the LID to counsel on June 28 to expand the LID boundary and build some additional 111 feet of street improvements on southwest Spring Garden Street. That will interest ever closer to having east-west pedestrian connection to southwest Capitol Highway, where PBOB's going to be doing a major project in the not-too-distant future. So, look for that on June 28 with a second reading on July 5. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll, you're just here to answer questions.
Yes, if you have any technical questions regarding the park development, my name is Travis Rubal. I'm the Capital Project Manager, and I'd be happy to answer any you might have.
Great. I just have one question, and it's sort of a hypothetic, well, it's not hypothetical, I guess. It's just sort of a processy question. So, we are now, as you said, competing with other public institutions that are looking for the same expertise. We're obviously competing with the private sector for contracting and labor. I'm certainly seeing this in the housing market, where the cost of construction has been escalating pretty rapidly. How do you weigh decisions about expediency against rising costs? In other words, is there a point at which the inflation in the construction market might dictate to us that we actually hold off on certain capital construction projects until a time when the cost of construction is more stable, or is it more important to be online quickly? How do you weigh those different factors?
If I might take a shot at it?
Sure, absolutely.
We have a lot of other projects in the pipeline, so it's not like we're doing everything now at the height of the market. In fact, it's one of the good things about having certain development charges, which is funding this particular project. We know that there are going to be many others coming down the line. We have a certain amount of parks' staffing expertise, so they are working at maximum, which we want them to. Thank you very much. And we know that there will be work in a few years' time as well.
Very good.
I think if we could figure out when that timeframe will be, Mayor, we could all retire very, very early. But figuring out that timing is a significant issue, and projects get budgeted and time-planned, and at some point, you have to pull the trigger. Or you say no, and you do. You put it off, and then what are the downsides? And did you guess right?
And our process in parks, if we leave it too long, then we have to go back and look at the plan for the park as well. So, I know Mayor Hales used to say that when he took office in 2013, the only cranes in the sky were on public projects. And, you know, obviously, over the recession, Mayor Adams got the stimulus money from the federal government, and a lot, the only projects being done were the public ones. So, I do recognize the wisdom of your question, and also think that the approach we're taking is the wise one.
Very good. I'm hearing a high level of confidence from the team as well on this, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay.
And by the way, I guess it's not insignificant. The community's been highly engaged in this, and they are very much looking forward to their new park. Looks great.
Thank you.
Any further questions or conversations on this?
Nobody wants to testify.
Great. Any public testimony?
No one signed up.
So, move the report.
If I may, I had one matter to bring up, and maybe this is the wrong matter.
Sure.
I was informed by council, oh, okay. I'm seeing the thumbs up from the council clerk. I had been informed about the matter of a bid amount being corrected.
It was correct.
It was corrected.
Okay, great. So, no amendments required.
No.
That's your job, so you're not, you're not a problem at all. So, Commissioner Fritz moves, and I'm sorry, who's second? Commissioner Udaley, second. Please call the roll.
Fish.
Nice report, and congratulations. Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
This is especially satisfying to me. I used to live on Dolph Court when we first moved to Portland. And Jim Franciscone, Commissioner Franciscone, was one who bought this from Portland Public Schools. There was one year where under Mayor Vera Katz, money was just given to the schools, and then Jim Franciscone said, "No, wait a minute. You've got a lot of properties. Let's buy them." So, there's this one in Multnomah Neighborhood Association. It's the Kerr Property, which is 10 acres in West Portland Park. Thanks very much. You mentioned the Neighborhood Association. Thanks to the Multnomah Neighborhood Association, as usual, there was not unanimity on the direction to go. And so, thank you for the public involvement staff who worked through some challenging issues. Thanks very much to the Friends of Spring Garden and the advisory committee on this particular project. Laurie, in particular, has worked extremely hard. And as I found when trying to get new parks done in southwest Portland, by the time you actually get it done, your children are almost in college. So, it does become a labor of love for the community rather than for one that particularly benefits folks. I'm excited about this one. It's just up the hill from the Headwaters Senior Affordable Housing Complex that was developed several years ago. It's within walking distance, and with the new sidewalks, easy walking distance from Barber Boulevard, and when bus rapid transit or light rail comes on Barber. I think this is going to be another project where we put the park in first, and then the density can be added because we've got the amenities. So, I'm very excited about that. And you mentioned about Capitol Highway as well. Yes, it's sad when there's only a few streets in the entire Neighborhood Association that actually have sidewalks. And I know that you're working on that, Andrew, and appreciate all your work on it. Thank you very much to my park staff, to Christina Neves and Poo Jabat, and my chief of staff, Tim Krail. Aye.
Wheeler.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks to the Parks Bureau, and thank you for all of your hard work. And congratulations to the community. I vote aye. The report's accepted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Thank you.
Item 562, approve rental rehabilitation conditional grant product guidelines.
Come on up. Good morning.
Thank you.
Mayor Wheeler, good morning, Commissioners as well. My name is Andrea Mathiason with the Portland Housing Bureau. And I had anticipated having Katrina Holland from the Community Alliance of Tenants, and John Mulvico, Chair of the East Portland Action Plan Housing Subcommittee, here next to me. But this was a very efficient council agenda today. So, they may come in late, or we may just miss them completely. Today, you have in front of you the ordinance to approve the rental rehabilitation pilot program for East Portland, and all of the related documents that go into rolling out that pilot program. The purpose of the pilot is to prevent displacement of vulnerable families living in East Portland rental units, and encourage property owners to address habitability concerns that may be impacting or exacerbating the health of those families, and also to maintain affordable rents for those households in order to stabilize them. The program requirements for the program, and you've got a copy of those current proposed program guidelines in your packet, but just to provide a summary overview of the ones that you have in detail. Unit eligibility for the program is required for privately-owned rental properties, so these are not publicly-owned or nonprofit-partner-owned regulated units, but privately-owned housing stock located in East Portland and then occupied by tenants below 60% of area median income. We've got some exceptions to that in order to accommodate households that might be living in a handful of individual units in properties up to 80% area median income. Eligible expenses would include addressing identified code violations, unidentified potential code violations, as well as issues such as lead-based paint, asbestos, mold, things that we know can impact health of occupants, as well as weatherization upgrades that might be needed. Financing requirements for property owners that are engaging in the program would include agreeing to regulate the rents for a period of 10 years, affordable to households at 60% of AMI, annual reporting to the Portland Housing Bureau with regard to the income of the tenant occupants and the rents being charged, ongoing physical maintenance on the condition of the properties, and then the voluntary use of tenant protection requirements, such as offering 12-month leases, adequate tenant notices, only termination of leases for cause. And again, you've got that detail in your packet at this point, I believe. This is a pilot program for 1718 that's being proposed, and so, in an effort to move that forward expeditiously and learn as many lessons as we can through that pilot program implementation, we are going to work with a program administrator. Inhabit is a nonprofit organization in town doing some of this work currently. They will help both tenants and property owners work through the requirements of the program. One of the things that we have heard from similar programs is that getting tenants to voluntarily provide income information in that certified way the program will require can be a barrier if there are language challenges. And so, having a community-based organization that can work with the tenants and the landlords can help address that issue. We are proposing to work closely with the Multnomah County Weatherization Program, and the rationale for this proposal is that it will help to leverage resources in an attempt to enroll as many units as possible. It will also maximize our enforcement capabilities, because they will have similar enforcement mechanisms in place. And it will also allow us to jointly use a skilled minority contractor pool as well. We also anticipate, in addition to referrals from the Multnomah County Weatherization Program- Program, referrals from the code inspections team at the Bureau of Development Services, and also from community partners such as CAT or other social service organizations in East Portland, working with tenants living in substandard housing. One of the things that we do know is that tenants are frequently reluctant to engage the code enforcement process for fear of retaliatory evictions. And so if we can hear from those tenants about the properties that they are living in, the city and our program administrator inhabit can approach property owners proactively with a carrot as opposed to a stick in some cases. We anticipate 30 to 50 units will be assisted through this pilot in this first round in 1718 with the funding that's been budgeted. And I see here that John Mulvey has joined me, so I'm going to invite him also to provide some words.
Hi. I heard you were a little ahead of schedule, so I ran right over, so I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is John Mulvey. I am a co-chair of the East Portland Action Plan Housing Subcommittee. And I really appreciate the chance to come in and talk to you about this program. East Portland, as you know, is a lot of things. It's a beautiful, diverse, and engaged community. It's also a place that's absorbed almost half of the Portland population growth over the last decade. It's a place that is witnessing some of the city's highest rates of rent increases. It's a place that is home to a disproportionate share of Portlanders who are under 18. It's a place that's seen chronic underinvestment in city housing dollars. And that's not past tense. I want you to be aware. That's ongoing. It's also a place that has a disproportionate share of the city's substandard housing, rental housing in particular. And that's based on Portland Housing Bureau data. And it's kind of remarkable. I know you're all long-term Portlanders, so it probably doesn't surprise you to know that 20 years ago, that wasn't true. East Portland was more or less typical for the rest of the city. So it's been disinvestment in recent decades that's led to this problem. And that's not necessarily city disinvestment, although that's part of it. Private disinvestment has been part of it, too. So just to understand, you know, East Portlanders right now are some of the most vulnerable renters in the city. They're right in the crosshairs of the housing crisis that we've been seeing. And we know from past experience that some of the issues play out a little differently in East Portland than they do in some of the other areas of town. It's just historically got a different sort of flavor. It's developed differently, and the community of people there is a little different. So EPAP's basic sort of functioning reality is that we're always coming to you folks and trying to persuade you about why our problems are unique, and they don't necessarily fit with some of the solutions that are being dealt with citywide. So I want to talk to you about how we got here. EPAP's Housing Subcommittee worked really closely with the Housing Bureau. We have excellent relationships with the staffers there. And we've been working on anti-displacement issues for a number of years now. And about two years ago, we had a pretty remarkable gathering at the David Douglas High School cafeteria. We had more than 200 people who came in on a kind of a sweltering Saturday afternoon to talk about housing. And remarkably, we had more than 90% of the participants whose first language was not English. And that's true. We were able to quantify that. We had something like, I believe, 10 different language translators on hand. And I know you all, as politicians, you've been to or hosted public forums that somehow sort of get hijacked a little bit. Maybe it's even happened in this room. I'm not sure. But this was an interesting event because I kind of came in, and I felt a little like the joke was on me a little bit, because I walked in there having prepared to give a sort of talk on things like inclusionary housing and no-net-loss housing policies. And really, the group that showed up, they wanted to talk about what was happening to them. And so our agenda sort of went out the window, and it turned into an opportunity for people who don't normally get to speak up to kind of share how housing was impacting them. And one of the things that we heard loud and clear, especially among immigrant communities, was their fear of reporting code violations to the city or to anybody else. Oftentimes, people are living in overcrowded conditions, and they don't really have a remedy for that. There's no other place they can move to that they can live in a, you know, more appropriate setting. So hearing from these people and the impassioned stories that they shared with us that afternoon has really driven a lot of what our Housing Committee has been working on in the two years since then. One of the things that we sat down immediately to get to work on was, what can we do about the quality of the housing that is being rented in East Portland? And as I said, we have a great relationship with the Housing Bureau, and Kurt Krieger joined us for that meeting, as well as others. And we began working on a program where we could help landlords rehabilitate these rental units. If there's a unit that has, you know, a leaky roof, or a mold problem, or a cracked foundation, we would help finance them to bring that up to speed. And in return, we would insist on guarantees of affordability. This program isn't going to solve the problem, but I think we all realize that we need a whole menu of solutions to solve the problem. And so I think I'll leave it there and let Andrea sort of get into the details of the program, if she hasn't already, which she may have. But I just wanted to let you know that this is something that we've been collaborating with the Housing Bureau for the last two years as a specific remedy to a particular problem that's in East Portland. And we hope that you'll see fit to support it.
Thank you very much. And that was a very helpful, also historical and contextual perspective. So thank you for that. Commissioner Udaley and Commissioner Fish?
Thank you for the presentation. I am generally supportive of the rental rehabilitation pilot project. I have a few questions and concerns. I mean, number one, we know that hundreds and possibly thousands of low-income renters in Portland are living in substandard conditions. So anything we can do to improve their situation is great. I am a little bit resident, reticent, about the fact that we'll be spending our public dollars and benefiting private landlords. So I'm glad to see that there are some pretty aggressive financing requirements. And I just want to be clear, if they do violate the agreement, it says that we'll impose penalties and record a lien against the property. Is that equal to our investment, or maybe a prorated amount, depending on what we got out of the deal? How will that work?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Udaley. I think that's a great question. And at this point in time, we have modeled our enforcement mechanisms off those of, as I was mentioning earlier, the Multnomah County Weatherization Program, so we can kind of maximize our compliance efforts. If the city does not receive the full 10-year benefit of the regulated units at any point in time, we would require the property owner to pay back the full amount of the investment. We are not anticipating prorating a repayment amount. And I do believe there is the appetite to consider penalties, so that this is not just an interest-free loan. We're balancing that against our desire to also maximize property owner participation in the program. And so that would be one consideration in terms of contemplating additional penalties for noncompliance.
Great. And do you anticipate that, in general, we would be getting -- well, I mean, what we're getting back is a tenant living in safer conditions who's not going to be cost-burdened or displaced. I don't know how you place a value on that, but will we roughly get back what we're putting in over this period of 10 years as far as the rental, the kind of semi-permanent rental reduction? Does that make sense? Like, if we spend $50,000 to rehab a unit, is there a dollar amount you're thinking we're going to get back in benefit?
I did some back-of-nack-in math in anticipation of a question along these lines. And so if you look at the current proposed per-unit investment cap is $25,000 per unit. If you look at that as a per-unit-per-month subsidy, it would be approximately $200 per month, right? And so that would be the comparable amount of rent assistance, for example, that would need to be invested in order to achieve those rents.
Okay. My last question. I'm a little concerned about the potential for displacing tenants who are in these improved units who rise above 60% MFI. Right now, rents are -- market-rate rents are affordable to people earning 120% and above. 60% is a fairly low threshold. And if there's a reduction in household size, or a raise, or a change in jobs that bumps those people up above 60%, but still not to a level where they can afford market-rate housing, I'm worried about the consequences of that. So how would we deal with that?
And these program guidelines, as John was mentioning, were put into place for your consideration primarily through that anti-displacement lens, first and foremost. And so what's on the table, and I believe it's actually included in the current program guidelines, is that incomes are allowed to rise in place.
Okay.
This is an anti-displacement program, and so people would not be impacted necessarily by rising incomes in that way.
Okay. I mean, they have to provide proof of income every year, so I'm assuming there's some trigger. I just wanted to know if there was going to be flexibility or special considerations in an event like I've described?
In terms of a reduction in family size?
Could I just maybe take it around, take it in a different way? Are you saying that if it starts off that the property qualifies because the tenant is below 60%, as long as it's the same tenant who's now making 80 or 100%, they would not be displaced? Is that what you're asking, Commissioner?
It's not what I'm asking, but it's a potential answer.
So a collective response would be that we are requiring annual income information so that we can tell if occupants have changed. The program would require initial incomes coming in to be below 60% of AMI. Existing tenants who would remain there, hopefully for the full 10 years and longer, would not be penalized for their incomes rising in place. I think, in fairness to the property owners, what we would need to consider would be how those rents would be allowed, if they were supported, to be increased as tenant incomes increased.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fish? Andrea, thanks for your excellent presentation. And I want to drill down on some of the other details. So why did we settle on a 10-year period for the regulatory agreement?
It seemed to equate with the level of investment in terms of $25,000 per unit. The original request for budget for this program actually proposed a lower cost per unit. Perhaps it was $15,000. I actually can't recall. But in conversations with industry professionals, they all voiced the same opinion that the cost per unit needed to be higher in order to adequately address conditions, structural roofs, whatnot, particularly in larger multifamily properties. And so as we moved closer to the $25,000 per unit, a 10-year affordability period seemed to be reasonable for the property owners, which is why you have the code change proposed in front of you for this program, only the reduction from 60 years to 10 years for these resources.
Thank you. Second question is, you've built in some tenant protections, but it says specifically that rents may not be increased during the first 12 months, but there doesn't seem to be any kind of protection against future rent increases. So what are the protections from future rent increases beyond year one?
So beyond year one, what we would be looking at is an expectation for the rents to remain affordable, which would be 30% of a household's income for a family, an individual household, at 60% AMI or below. And I don't have those rents in front of me at my fingertips. I can get them for you if you'd like.
So I don't quite understand how we're going to administer that. If it was a Section 8 voucher, then there is a subsidy that the government provides to cover the difference. But every tenant would be different and unique. And I don't also want us to create a perverse incentive to have a landlord displace someone to get a quote-unquote "better tenant" that allows them to get a higher rent. So Kurt, we may want to take a look at that. I'm less clear about that, how that works, both in terms of, does it meet our goal, and is it administratively enforceable? Because I don't want an undue burden on Andrea and her team. The eligible expenditures include energy efficiency, but it doesn't create a hierarchy of investment priorities. And it seems to me that the first -- I mean, I'm all for energy efficiency, but the first priority should be bringing a unit up to code, getting it rid of the mold in the bathroom, making sure there's a working kitchen, those kinds of things, getting the lead paint out of the family room. As it's currently structured, though, it doesn't appear that there is a hierarchy. And so could we create a hierarchy, or did you just choose not to do that?
We absolutely should have and will create a hierarchy. So as we have been working with inhabit, what we've talked about is for properties who have identified code violations, those need to be addressed first. For properties that have potential code violations, clearly those will be addressed. And so what they will be using to assess in terms of property condition to determine those repair needs is actually a Bureau of Development Services Title 29 checklist. And so they'll be going through that as a tool to ensure compliance with code requirements around habitability.
Well, on that point, the guidelines state that assisted properties may be subject to annual housing maintenance inspections. And I wonder whether we shouldn't make that mandatory, at least in the first year or two. My hope and expectation is that for $25,000 and a regulatory agreement, we're able to actually ensure that the unit comes up to code. And I think from an optics point of view, it would look terrible for the city to put $25,000 into a unit that is inhabitable. So, sir?
Can I speak to that? This is something that we've talked about in a fair amount of detail. And actually, I think it goes to Commissioner Udaley's point about reticence at lending money to, let's say, bad landlords. We looked really closely at that question. And I think the thing that persuaded me was, first of all, I don't think bad landlords are going to participate in a program like this. We, in addition to all of our low-income renter members at EPAP, we have a lot of small-scale landlords, too.
I just want to clarify, I did not say bad landlords. I said private property owners. Yeah.
Okay. Well, fair enough. And we had some of the same concerns. The thing is, that's that this program, I think, will help bring those rental units into compliance. We don't have an accurate picture of the amount of real code violations that are taking place out there. And personally, I would love to see the city take a more active role. I think this project is one piece of identifying the code violations that we know are there but aren't reported.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I'm looking at this, I'm agnostic as to who the owner is, and just looking at, through the lens of the family living in the unit. And if we're investing $25,000, I think we ought to make sure that there's a full inspection at the front end to determine the extent of code violations. The money should be tailored to address them, and there should be a minimum threshold of habitability that justifies our investment. Otherwise, we're in the situation of investing in properties where people still are living in substandard conditions. And my guess is that, once we've put the money in, we're almost on the hook for making sure that the units are habitable. So I flag that as an issue. The code, the proposed, the proposal before us contemplates that either the director or the commissioner in charge effectively can make all the decisions about where to invest. And it doesn't, because the threshold is up to a half million, the director, up to a million, the commissioner, above a million, it would come to council. But we're only talking about, we're talking about initial investment of less than $1 million. So I'm comfortable with that as long as the council gets an annual report. Is that your, are you contemplating an annual report to council?
I believe that we are anticipating a report back to council as soon as these funds are committed, so that you can have a sense of how this pilot program achieved its outcomes, so that you can make future funding considerations.
Yeah. And, you know, we've been spoiled by the Housing Bureau in that annually, or more regularly than annually, you come before us on all the regulated units and tell us whether people are no longer eligible to be on the program, and you kick them off. And that's tax abatements and other things. This may have the same flavor, because there's a whole bunch of triggers in here about unapproved sale, unapproved transfer, other changes that the Bureau does not agree to, which then has, triggers the clawback provision, where you recapture the money. But I think if we're going to have such deference to administrative decision-making, I think we need robust reporting back to council at the end of, at the end of the year. And let me just summarize my concerns. I agree with Commissioner Udaley, we want to make sure that existing tenants don't perversely get displaced because they happen to see their incomes go up. I think you've answered that, that the incumbent tenants stay there even if, even during the 10-year period if their incomes grow. I want to create, make sure we're not creating a perverse incentive to displace someone and bring in a different tenant in order to give the landlord the opportunity to charge higher rents. And that, it seems to me, is a function of who is the tenant, based on the way you're calculating this. And I respectfully think that, from a regulatory point of view, we don't have the tools to really enforce that. And I think we ought to think long and hard about whether we want to act like a Section 8 voucher administrator without all the resources. The third is, I think it's important that we create a hierarchy of uses. And again, for this particular program, energy efficiency would not be my highest priority. Habitability would be energy efficiency is icing on the cake. And then I would encourage the director and the commissioner in charge, since they're delegated authority to award the monies, that you think about, if not a competitive process, what are the requirements so we make sure we're getting the very best projects and the best return on public investment? At the end of the day, this pilot's going to tell us whether this works for 30 to 50 households. We're touching, it's a very light touch. And it actually may turn out that other tools we have give us a better bang for the buck. We'll be able to compare that. And I'm open to that conversation, because $25,000 a unit versus the bond money purchasing a property for the long term, or a tax abatement that might accomplish a similar goal. We'll find out whether this is the most efficient use of scarce resources. But I think it's very important that we reward landlords that, as part of this, are bringing their units up to habitability, and it's not just a half-measure.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just on the numbers again, Goldan Salazar and my staff pointed out that in the financials, there's 16, in the 1617 budget, there's $470,000. So you haven't spent any of that yet?
That is correct. We are looking at this pilot to utilize 1718 budget resources.
Well, no, you've got 470,000 in the 1617 budget. So none of that has gone out the door yet?
That is correct.
And then the budget for the next fiscal year is $1,400,000 about.
So there was a discrepancy in the impact statement that was submitted prior to the adopted budget. So at this point in time, in the 1718 adopted budget, that impact statement should actually read, I believe, $578,000 in general fund is available for this pilot program.
Well...
The impact statement was submitted to the mayor's office back in, before the adopted budget.
So we're not funding this program at 1.4 in the next...
I honestly don't remember. We can get that information to you
Yeah, it's a non-emergency.
Unless Director Krieger recalls.
We'll have to check back.
Okay.
Yeah. And since it's non-emergency, we can get that
Yeah, absolutely.
...information next week. Also, there's the issue of the area median income. Is this specific to the area? Because when we were looking at Gateway, you know, median income there, market rate there is about 80% MFI somewhere else. So is it specific to the area?
No, unfortunately, it is the HUD AMI. So the documents that you have in your packets actually have the 2016 numbers, which are in the process of being updated for 2017, but it is not specific to East Portland.
So if we're trying to get something that's more specific to East Portland, maybe that's not the right number?
I agree with that concern, absolutely. We've seen other programs, like, for instance, inclusionary housing, which really only benefits people at 60, in some cases 60, in most cases 80%, as something that really has little value in preventing displacement in East Portland. Because, as you say, where the rents are, when I raised that concern, is Matthew Schabold here, when I asked him about that, he said, "Well, when the rents increase in Portland, then it'll start to have a greater impact," which is a very frustrating answer. It's correct.
Yeah.
But it's a frustrating answer, because I would hate to see rents reach that point before we start seeing. So if you're wondering whether I would support a lower MFI, I certainly would.
Well, since this has been characterized as a pilot project, it might be something to think about, that we actually make it a pilot project in a specific area, to see, can we help the areas that are most plagued by rental units that are not up to code, rather than making it City Y, where the benefit's going to be maybe more in St. John's than it would be in East Portland. There's just something to think about, Mayor.
Good. I think these are all extremely helpful revisions. And Director Krieger's here diligently taking notes.
If I might just finish my...
Oh, yeah.
I thought I was done.
Commissioner Fritz, then Commissioner Udaley.
To the issue of how do you prioritize, I would be concerned that the first in asking for money with their hands out would be the people who are already connected, and, you know, what kind of an outreach program are we going to do, so that the kinds of folks who are at your community meeting know that they can get their landlord, who also might not speak English as a first language, to come in. So that, again, as a pilot, let's see how we can target it in the way that we've done, for instance, on interstate URA numbers.
And we are absolutely considering how, within a relatively short pilot program timeline, we can both demonstrate outcomes and have a robust enrollment process to identify properties where the most vulnerable tenants might be housed.
I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what Commissioner Fish raised earlier. I also have a concern about the annual rent increases. I think that we need to look hard, both at the qualifying, qualifying income in consideration of lower incomes and lower rents in East Portland, and what we tie that annual rent increase to. I think tying it to the actual tenant could be problematic. I'd suggest looking at, honestly, well, one of the reasons is that we know that we have extremely low-income renters paying 60, 70, 80% of their income. So they're already going to be well beyond that 30% of, and in that 10-year period, they may never catch up, because a social security check is less than $12,000 a year. So I'm wondering if we should be looking at a lower MFI in consideration of the area, and then tying the annual rent increases to 30% of that MFI, instead of basing it on tenant income?
Thank you.
Very good.
Commissioner, if I can speak to that. Remember, these are privately-owned units. And so you won't find anyone who's more concerned with low-income renters than I am. But you also have to recognize that this is a voluntary program. And if we're requiring, say, 30% MFI rents, are we going to get anyone who's interested on that, on those terms?
Well, as Commissioner Fritz, I think, mentioned, maybe we could prioritize. Maybe we could find the, you know, most vulnerable, lowest income, lowest rent, worst condition, and start from there. Because if we're doing this in a neighborhood where rents are 80% of MFI, and our threshold is 60, I mean, I would have qualified for that last year. I know that I'm not anywhere near, or I wasn't anywhere near, to being among the most burdened and vulnerable renter. So, yeah, I know.
Well, I know you, and I don't think you'd tolerate a moldy bathroom or a leaky roof either, so.
John, I have lived in substandard housing for a decade, in very dangerous conditions, in fear of retaliation from my landlord. And thankfully, I no longer have to worry about that. But as feisty and informed as I am, it was really bad. Yeah.
Any further questions, colleagues? Any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
All right. And Director Krieger, it appears obvious there needs to be some further answering of questions and refinements before this proposal's brought back for second reading. But thank you for your hard work on this. Thanks for bringing it this far. This is a non-emergency first reading. It moves to second reading. There being no further business, we are adjourned until 2:00 PM.
Thank you.